Good evening. It is November 4th at 7:00 PM, and this is the first regular city commission meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. I hope you felt welcomed by Ned Huda, our IT manager, and Planning Director Stephen Spraker, who served as our greeters this evening. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. To my right, your left, we have Cassidy Ritz, the Recording Secretary, Scott McKee, Assistant City Attorney, filling in for Randy tonight, Commissioner from Zone 1 Dwight Selby, our Deputy Mayor and Zone 2 Commissioner Troy Kent, to my left and your right, Commissioner Susan Persis from Zone 3, Commissioner Rob Littleton from Zone 4. We have our chiefs way, way over there. And down in front, we have City Manager Joyce Shanahan, Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley, and City Clerk Colby Sylentow. For those of you listening online, I'm Bill Partington, Mayor. If you would please silence your cellphones at this time and rise for the invocation giving by Pastor Neil Ganzel Jr. from Kokina Presbyterian Church. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you with all of our hearts and minds for the joy of life that you have given to us, that we all bearing your image are such that we can listen to you, that we can speak, that we can ask you for wisdom. And tonight, we thank you for our governance in this town. We thank you for each Commissioner. We thank you for each member of the staff, for Joyce, and Father, for the Chief of Police, for the Fire Captain as well. We are grateful that we live in a community that is so well-served by the men and women in this room. Father, thank you for the beauty of our community. Thank you, Father, especially tonight, for the peace of Ormond Beach, Florida. We thank you, Father, for the way our citizens live together, for the way they, in a case like this meeting tonight, we come here expecting to see our community governed well by the people that we've elected to do that governance. We pray, Father, that tonight, as these folks gather up here, that you would give them wisdom, that you would give them peace, that you would give them love for one another and for all of those whom they govern, having been given that inestimable privilege by the votes we have cast for their service up here. We do thank you for each and every one of them. We pray these things in the name of my Lord Jesus Christ, and we thank you, O God, for your great grace in our lives. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, if the Police Chief and Captain Rus would come forward, we talked about accreditation at the last meeting and how proud we were to receive that accreditation. The Commission will present you with a plaque, and then we'd like to get a picture with you as well. If you guys will hold the plaque down there. This is from the Commission for Florida Law Enforcement Accreditation, Inc. Vietnam at the Ormond Beach Police Department has voluntarily complied with the required standards as set forth by the Commission for Florida Law Enforcement Accreditation and is hereby awarded the certificate of re-accreditation this 15th day of October 2020 and shall be recognized as an accredited agency for a term of three years. So congratulations. Are we centered?
No, not yet.
Not quite.
Let's get you guys a little bit.
Great. Awesome. Thank you. Congratulations. Audience remarks regarding items not on the agenda. At this time, we will hear from those of you who have signed a card to speak about any item which is not on the printed agenda for this meeting. The Commission has adopted a policy of a three-minute time limit for each speaker, and we start tonight with Tim Grigsby.
Hello. I live on 1206 Overbrook Drive, Ormond Beach. My name is Tim Grigsby. I'm here to speak about item number, Agenda item number, hold on a second, the second reading of Ordinance 2020-49. I know the city recently signed a contract with a consultant to develop a long-range plan for Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I would like to ask that the second reading of the Ordinance 2020-49 be postponed until such time as Suzanne Schreiber and other concerned citizens can put together a plan to acquire conservation easement and acquire possibly up to 66 lots at Plantation Oaks adjoining along the frontage of Old Tamoca in Ormond Beach near the Plantation Oaks development.
Thank you. And next, we have Suzanne Schreiber.
Good evening. Congratulations on your reelection to serve the people of Ormond Beach in your roles as Commissioner and Mayor. I'm here to discuss a beneficial project to protect the Ormond Scenic Loop. On October 22nd, Natalie Phillips-Zack and I met with Parker Mitchenberg concerning the Plantation Oaks development. He was gracious to accept our request. We asked for the 175-foot buffer to be placed in a conservation easement. He agreed to do this. He has already contacted Stephen Spraker concerning the buffer and taking the action. I'm here to request a conservation easement overlay to become a part of the comprehensive plan to protect the loop. In addition, we asked if he is willing to sell the 76 lots along the buffer for conservation land to widen that portion of the buffer. He agreed. We are here tonight to discuss the possibilities of the city applying for grants, partners, and considering funds for purchasing this land to protect the Ormond Scenic Loop. A grant is currently open for application through FCT. Volusia Forever was just voted for renewal. The petition currently has 61,000 signatures expressing a strong interest in protecting the loop. Mr. Mitchenberg is a willing seller and has been very cooperative in working with us. The city has an opportunity to work to protect the loop, and we all benefit from scenic byways resources being protected. We reached out to Mrs. Shanahan a few months ago for a meeting, but we were declined. Now, we're here in person asking for the city to assist in protecting the loop by taking action. The solutions are achievable. The conversation with Mr. Mitchenberg was productive, and we can move forward to protect one of Volusia County's most pristine areas, the Ormond Scenic Loop and Trail. We want to thank Parker Mitchenberg for his collaboration, and we look forward to hearing from you. I know you all do care about the loop. I've heard you talk about it, so I appreciate your cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you. The minutes from the October 20th, 2020 city commission meeting have been sent to the Commission for review, also posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? If not, just need a motion to approve.
Move approval of the minutes from October 20th, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. And the consent agenda is next. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? Just need a motion and a second.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And at this time, I would ask Finance Director Kelly McGuire just to give us some information on the CARES Act item.
So our next step, Mayor, will be to submit that to the county. We would expect that we would receive the $1.5 million reimbursement relatively quickly. And we just wanted to be clear with you that because of the way we record this, it'll be recorded in last fiscal year. So you'll see that in your 9/30/20 audit. Those dollars are going to be designated, and then we'll be coming back to you probably in January or February to move forward with some of the purchases we've already discussed with you, those being the technology purchases and then the hands-free restrooms. So we just want to make sure that that was clearly communicated in the memo.
Great. I appreciate that. Any questions for Kelly?
Yeah, I have a question.
Commissioner Selby.
Kelly, so the Revenue Stabilization Fund that we created, we needed to use some of that money in order to replace the money that was lost due to COVID, right?
Correct.
Now, does this then supplement those funds?
Two separate pots, if you will, of dollars. So we had the Revenue Stabilization Fund, which you already set up. We'll use that if it's necessary, right? And then, this is additional money, $1.5 million, that the county is sharing of their CARES Act money. Because we are able to expend this on wages for police and fire, which were already part of the budget, this is essentially a $1.5 million that will be added to fund balance. And so the intent was that we would come back to you and proceed with the purchases that we had originally talked about. So originally, when we came to you, just for clarification, the county said you can use this for certain items. You have to get those items done by December 31st. Well, in order to go out and go through our bidding processes, et cetera, it was going to be almost impossible for us to get the bids, come back to you, make the purchases, pay the invoices, which all was a requirement, in order to get the $1.5 million. There was a change recently in the interpretation by the Treasury Department, and they said, well, we'll allow you to use this for public safety wages. Well, of course, we were already expending public safety wages, so that made it very easy. And those are public safety wages that occurred last calendar year, right? So those expenses have already been incurred. They were part of our budget originally. So the two items we're talking about really are separate. The Revenue Stabilization Fund is separate and apart from this $1.5 million.
Okay, but it ends up in the general fund.
It all ends up in the general fund. It's just designated, specifically designated for whatever purpose you decide it designated for.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
City Manager Shanahan.
So initially, as Kelly said, the Treasury Department did not allow us to use it for wages. They just recently came out with that designation. So nearly all of the cities that are getting this grant from the county are using it for wages because it's easy to document and you get the money quicker. If we, we can still use it on those other items, but we're not sure that we could get it done, processed, and paid for in that period of time. So we will come back to you. You'll have another opportunity to make a decision whether or not you want to go forward with that. But some of those items are pretty important to us. So we'll bring that back to you at another meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kelly or Joyce? Thank you both. And any Commissioner wish to comment on a consent agenda item? If not, we will move to the public hearings. I'll open the public hearings and ask the City Clerk to read 7A.
Ordinance number 2020-46, an ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map to change the designation of an 18.47-plus acre real property located at 350 Clyde Morris Boulevard from Volusia County Urban Low Intensity, ULI, to the City of Ormond Beach Residential Office Retail, ROR, limiting the residential density to four units per acre and the floor area ratio, FAR, to 0.45, providing for public hearings and transmittal, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of Ordinance number 2020-46, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I don't have any cards.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 7B.
Ordinance number 2020-50, an ordinance amending Paragraph C Official Zoning Map of Section 2-01, established of Article 1, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Official Zoning Map of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by amending the official zoning map to rezone certain real property totaling 18.47-plus acres located at 350 Clyde Morris Boulevard from Volusia County B2 Neighborhood Commercial and R2 Urban Single Family Residential to Ormond Beach B10 Suburban Boulevard, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of Ordinance number 2020-50, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. And I'll ask our Planning Director Stephen Spraker to present on this item.
Good evening, Stephen Spraker. The last item was the comprehensive plan adoption for this property. This property was annexed into the city, so we're going in the process of doing land use and zoning. The requested zoning is the B10 zoning district. There are other B10 properties in and around the subject property. We find it consistent with the comprehensive plan that was previously adopted. The planning board did recommend approval on August 13th, 7 to 0. Staff has also recommended to go from the Volusia County zoning to the Ormond Beach B10 zoning. There are no plans yet submitted for this property that would go through site plan and neighborhood meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Commissioner?
Mr. Spraker, how much buffer would be in between that and the homes that are in Aberdeen?
There's a 20-foot landscape buffer requirement. There also are some conservation areas what the applicant has said they were going to save. So it's hard to know. It would be at least 20 feet. It may be more depending on the characteristics of the property and a wall.
Thank you.
Good deal. I don't have any cards on 7B.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And 7C.
Ordinance number 2020-51, an ordinance amending Paragraph C Official Zoning Map of Section 2-01, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Official Zoning Map of Article 1, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Official Zoning Map of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by amending the official zoning map to rezone a certain parcel of real property totaling approximately 6.06 acres located at 1020 to 1044 North US Highway 1, from B8 Commercial with a planned business development overlay to planned business development, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of Ordinance number 2020-51, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. And I'll ask Planning Director Stephen Spraker to present C and D at the same time.
Thank you. The subject property is located along US 1. This would be Airport Road right here. So it's almost at the corner. There is one property in between. The property has a long history. Back in 1997, they went through a planned business development to try to create a reuse of the property. They allowed mini warehouse, warehouse, and retail development. There has been a couple amendments. The first action is for a zoning map amendment. So they're going to take the entire property and go to planned business development. In 2004, our land development code changed where if you did a planned business development, it was no longer an overlay. It became your zoning district. So this is the first amendment for this property since 2004. So it's required to go through that planned business development process. So the first item is simply to change it from the B8 zoning district with the planned business development overlay to planned business development. The second item on your agenda, which would be the next ordinance, is the issuance of development order. The project seeks to do two warehouses. The first one is approximately 7,800 square feet, and the next one is 6,600 square feet. Throughout the site, there are warehouses and mini warehouses on the property, generally towards the rear. The applicant is seeking to do large vehicle storage inside the building and then warehouse storage, so it's a unique use. The front of the building would be consistent with the remainder of the property and architecturally treat it. Staff is recommending approval. The planning board reviewed both items on October 8th and recommended approval, 7 to 0. There are two separate items. The first one is the zoning map amendment, and then the second one is the issuance of development order for the site-specific approval. The applicant is here. If there are any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for either Stephen or Cole Buck and Kim Buck are here as the applicants? Commissioner Selby?
Yeah, thank you. Stephen, when I was looking at the footprints of the buildings, are there any restrooms in any of those units?
No, they're, they're just storage. So there's no, there's no restroom bathrooms. It's not a business warehouse, business and storage, where you have a small office. So they're solely dedicated for storage and mini warehouse. The mini warehouse would be on the end of the units right here and right here. But otherwise, people would be able to drive their vehicles, store them, secure them, and then leave them inside.
Got it. And that elevation that you showed was the east side of the easterly building, I assume, right?
Facing US 1.
Right, facing US 1. Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else? I don't have any cards. Just need a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Good deal. Any discussion? Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And 7D.
Ordinance number 2020-52, an ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a third amended development order for planned business development known as US 1 Business Park, authorizing the construction of two buildings consisting of 7,810 and 6,600 square feet, along with associated site improvements to be located at 1020 to 1044 North US Highway 1, authorizing mini warehouses, warehouse storage, and the indoor warehouse storage of recreation vehicles and boats, establishing conditions and expirations of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of Ordinance number 2020-52, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I don't have any cards.
I'll move Ordinance 2020-52.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And 7E.
Resolution number 2020-167, a resolution authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a special exception regarding the racetrack convenience store located at 1670 West Granada Boulevard to allow two electronic changeable copy signs for the retail prices of gasoline, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is Resolution number 2020-167, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. And Stephen, we're keeping you busy tonight on 7E.
So this is the racetrack at Interchange Boulevard and West Granada Boulevard. It was built around 2009. There were two site signs that were developed, both on Granada. The existing pictures, interestingly enough, show this was the old monument sign where you had five feet was the maximum height. So they haven't changed it since 2009. Our land development code was amended to allow electronic changeable copy signs through a special exception. This is the third one coming before the board. So they have the architectural treatment of the base to get it to eight-feet height. The overall percentage of both signs is 36 percent, where they're allowed up to 60 percent. The standards in the land development code, I know you can't read that, are within the development order, which includes a number of times it can change, which is six hours. And the planning board did review it and recommended approval, 7 to 0. Staff is also recommending approval and here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
This has nothing to do with this item, but would it be possible to make the right-in entrance at the west end of this property a right-out also?
That was specifically looked at with the site plan development. We could talk to the Florida Department of Transportation again, but they didn't want it to be, at the time, in 2009, they did not want this to be an exit. So we could always go back and talk to the racetrack.
It's really hard to get out of there. You have to make a left turn on the Interchange Boulevard. And then when you, and it's, there, between McDonald's and the other traffic coming out of Cracker Barrel and other, and we got that other hotel being developed now. It's going to be even harder to get on the Interchange. And then, when you get the Granada, then it's hard to get out. And I mean, if there was just another way to get out of that racetrack, it would, I think it would make it safer. So it's, is that something we would have to initiate, or is that something, okay?
We would approach DOT and the property owner to see.
Oh, I'm sure that, I'm sure the property owner would be, would be very interested in having that happen. It would improve their access tremendously. Thank you.
Any other questions? Just need a motion and a second.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we will close the public hearings in second reading of Ordinances 8A.
Ordinance number 2020-49, an ordinance amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2019 to 2020 by amending the General Fund 001, Local Law Enforcement Trust Fund 109, Grants Fund 116, Financing Debt Services Fund 205, 2010 Beachfront Park Bond Fund 220, Capital Improvements Fund 301, Recreational Impact Fee Fund 310, Facilities Renewal and Replacement Fund 317, Renewal and Replacement Fund 409, and the General Liability Fund 504, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of Ordinance number 2020-49, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I don't have any cards for 8A. Just need a motion and a second.
Move approval of Ordinance number 2020-49.
A second motion?
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we are at reports, suggestions, and requests. And tonight, we start with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, on behalf of city staff and myself, we want to wish you all great congratulations for winning reelection. We look forward to working with you in 2020 through 2022 and moving ahead the Commission's agenda. So we're really excited about that.
Thank you.
On November 17th, you'll have a brief reception before the organizational meeting, which you will be sworn in, and that shouldn't last very long. We'll also have, as we have in prior years, Dave Pizzo will be here to take photographs of each of you individually for the website and then collectively as a group. So we'll send you an email about that. Our reception will be outside. We're going to have a tent with some lights in it because we just don't have enough space inside to socially distance. We'll encourage mask-wearing, and it'll be smaller in size than normal. But that'll start at 5:30, and then we'll be in here at 6 o'clock. On December 1st is your Advisory Board Workshop. You remember that we go through all of those Advisory Board appointments. When will you be sending that out, Colby?
I'm going to try and send it out in the next week or two to you guys, so you'll have it ahead of time, so you have enough time to review everything.
And before she does that, she finds out how many times people have attended the meetings?
Yes.
If they're willing to serve. If you have people that are interested, please have them contact the City Clerk so that they can file an application with her. The PAL Golf Tournament will be on Saturday, November 14th, from 8:30 AM to 2:30 PM. That's a good outside activity for people to participate in. We'll have our low-shot, low-shot, low-cost pet clinic for shots on November 14th. Because of the virus, we're redoing some of the events that we normally would. We're having a Veterans Day drive-through celebration rather than a luncheon for them, where we will hand out the meals that we had prepared and recognize them. That's going to take place at the Performing Arts Center. If you want to participate or if you would like to stop by, let us know, and we'll make sure that we make arrangements for that. Additionally, we are going to do a similar drive-through event for our hometown heroes. I hope you saw the new banners up on the bridge.
Yes.
I think we had a total of 98. Is that correct? Somewhere in there. So really, it's just a great thing to see that up in November each year. We're continuing to work on capital projects. The Casement's North Side improvements will be finished hopefully by the first of the year. We've, we're working on events for the Christmas celebration. Some bad news to report. The Casement's Guild will not be holding their gala. They, they just can't get enough of their volunteers and their elderly, so they just can't do that. But we are still going to decorate the Casements like we normally do, and we'll have like a one-way path through. It'll be open, and anybody can go through, and we'll socially distance those folks. We're trying to find a way for them to open their gift shop because that's how they raise a lot of their money. So we're working on that. We're looking to do a virtual tree lighting out here, the tree that we normally do for the parade. The parade committee is not willing to have the parade. It's really difficult, hold on, I know, don't get excited. It's really difficult to stage all of those bands and floats to have the parade, and we just, we just can't do it. Nobody else in the surrounding area is really having parades. They're having drive-through parades. They're having, if you have a parade on the water, that's a little bit different. But the parade committee is not recommending moving forward with the parade. However, staff is working with Main Street to develop- However, staff is working with Main Street to develop a, sort of a drive-through Santa Claus parade, three days or six days, depending on how many days, over the course of two weeks, where we're encouraging the merchants to decorate their windows, bows and bells on the holiday, or bells and bells on the boulevard, or some sort of theme. And then the parade committee would look at the holiday decorations and award a first, second, third place like they do for the floats. And then the merchants would offer discounts or coupons maybe for free appetizers. So we're trying to encourage people to patronize the local businesses. And then we would like to have Santa ride through the downtown each evening, escorted by police and fire, and waved to folks that are out. So that's, that's an initial idea for no parade. I mean, it's kind of a drive-through parade in a way, so I see Commissioner Kent giving me the aye about that.
Yeah, I'm disappointed we didn't have that discussion up here. I would have liked to have heard what the other elected officials feel about it. I know other communities didn't, didn't go with a parade, and I was disappointed in those decisions, but I thought, that's not my community. So, yeah, that's something that I was hoping we could talk about and possibly make happen, but it sounds like that ship has sailed.
Well, the city doesn't usually do the parade. It's the parade committee. It's not, it's not city staff. We, we support them, but we don't, we don't facilitate them.
Yeah. It's not the last time I'll be disappointed in something. It's not, it's not you, Ms. Shanahan. It's, it's just, you know, you.
Everything.
It's a, yeah. Culmination.
It's a crappy kind of year.
Sure.
So we're looking at doing a virtual tree lighting here. We would film it for Facebook and have you all do that, I think, is that on the 4th, December 4th, before your commission meeting, so we could light up the tree and, so we'll send this all out in the memo, but I just wanted to give you some heads up about that.
I don't think we have a meeting on December 4th.
It's on the 1st.
Okay.
What's going to be virtual? The tree? The lights?
No, the tree will be here. We will put it on Facebook, so you won't, you'll light it here, but not everybody will be here. They'll have to participate virtually, just like you participate on Zoom meetings.
Will be here, but nobody else will be here?
No.
It'd be virtual for them?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, following suit with many of our other folks in the community. I know this is really awful. I hate to be the bearer of these kinds of news. And last, probably but not least, is that Santa's breakfast will not be happening either. It's difficult to socially distance children and provide food and all of that. It's just, it's just kind of impossible to do that. And if that's one more, I might as well get it all out at one time. Starry, starry night, because the museum will be closed, we won't be doing that either. That's all I have. I feel like the Grinch suggests Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Grinch.
I thank you. I'm sorry about that.
Christmas is canceled.
So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Joyce. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
Well, congratulations, and I am confident that the holiday festivities will be as big a hit as Halloween was, so I really think it'll be, it won't be the same like everything else this year, but it'll be fantastic. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Assistant City Attorney Scott McKee.
Nothing tonight, but just wanted to say congratulations to all, so thank you.
Good to see you, Scott. Yep, thanks for filling in. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Selby.
Well, I just want to say, I really don't have anything to say tonight, other than I'm really glad that we have concluded our campaign season, and I hope that the country wraps up its campaign season very quickly, and we know indeed who the, who the President of the United States will be, Vice President and Senators and Congress people. So, thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby. Deputy Mayor Kent?
Thank you, yeah. Just one, one brief comment. I just want to, first of all, congratulate each of you up on the dais tonight on your victory, so congratulations.